Recording has begun.
Okay. Good evening. Madam Clerk, can you call roll?
Councilman Winkler.
President.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Councilman Jenkins.
President, all on line. Can you hear me?
Mayor, yes, we can. Mayor James? Mayor James, we can't hear you.
How about now?
Now we can.
Fantastic. I am going to take my camera off for a second so I can figure out how to work this computer.
Mayor Protem Challenger. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, if you all join me in the place of allegiance. Okay, thank you for joining us tonight. I trust that council has had the opportunity to review the meeting agenda for this night's council meeting. And I'm looking for motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Yes. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 Hearing any opposed? Thank you. This brings us to the approval of minutes from the special meeting, the council meeting and the voting record of the closed session on February 27, 2024. The way, I think the best way to handle this is to do these individually. Did council have the opportunity to review these meeting notes going forward if there is a motion on the special meeting to approve the minutes of February 27, 2024? Yes.
Special meeting. Minutes for 27th February 2024.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the February 27, 2024 council special meeting minutes, say aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed, hearing none. We're gonna move on to the town council minutes of February 27, 2024 that started at 6 o'clock PM of the normal meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes as presented?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the February 27, 2024, 6 o'clock PM meeting minutes, state aye.
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 Okay. All those opposed, hearing none. We're gonna move on to the voting record of the closed session of February 27, 2024. It's page nine of 178 of the packet this evening. Do I have a motion to approve of the voting record presented in the agenda packet from February 27, 2024, starting at 5:33 PM?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes.
I move that we approve the closed session voting record for February 27, 2024.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed, hearing none. Thank you very much. This brings us to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up this evening to give us public comment? Seeing Director Phipps, Shay Herring had no.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk and Director Phipps. This brings us to matters of council discussion. And we're gonna bring up Mr. Kenny. Thank you, sir. From Mitchell and Titus to discuss our fiscal year 2023 audit. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sorry. Okay, so let's turn to page three, the table of contents. These are the items that we'll go over this evening. The audit highlights, who was on the team, summary of audit results and required communications. If we turn to page four, under the audit highlights, this discusses the scope of services summary, the engagement status, comments on the internal controls and non-atest services. So I wanted to let you know that for the audit that we conducted, the audit was done in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, and we issued an unmodified opinion, otherwise known as a clean opinion, for the year end and as of June 30, 2023. And also within your internal control letter, we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And there were no past adjustments noted, and the only adjustments we made during the year were for the pension plan, as consistent with previous years. All right, moving on to the next page. This is where it talks about our approach and what we do with respect to the audit. We have a planning stage, and then we go through a risk assessment, and then we customize our approach to, you know, what's happened during the year and the type of entities. Within your financial statements, you have governmental activities, you have business-type activities. We opine on those two items and also the major funds. So the general fund and some of the other funds as well. So it's almost like you have several audits within, you know, within the town, which is, you know, how the audit is to be conducted. Okay, moving on to page six, these are the team members. And then page seven, on the summary of audit results, just want to go through some of these items. If you look at revenue recognition, there's, because you have governmental activities and you have business-type activities, you actually have an accrual basis of accounting and a modified accrual basis of accounting, and that's described in your significant accounting policies. But revenue recognition is always an area that we point out, and of course, we have to customize our approach there. Cash and investments, you know, in that area, we look at the confirmations. Your investments are at fair value, so we'll look at that as well. And then your receivables, we'll send confirmations out, and we can also do subsequent collections to make sure the items that has been recorded as receivable as of June 30, the amount has come in within our audit period. No exceptions in all three of those areas. Moving on to the next item, capital assets and depreciation expense. So within your fixed assets, because you have governmental activities and business-type activities, your governmental activities, you know, your expenses from your general fund get added to that item, and therefore those are capitalized with respect to the government-wide statement. And then, of course, your business-type activities with your water and sewer fund, sanitation fund, those items are capitalized as well. So we'll look at the additions, we'll look at the deletions, we'll look at anything in construction in progress and make sure the amounts are properly recorded, and then we look at the depreciation and recalculate that as well. Okay, then the other item, just want to point out is under long-term liabilities, of course, with your debt, we're gonna confirm the debt, make sure the payments are consistent with the amortization schedule, and once again, there were no exceptions in any of these areas identified. Okay, next item on page nine. So this is, of course, your pension liability. That's the area where we do make adjustments, and of course, you're in the plan, and it's your proportionate share and those, you know, it's an estimate. It's never due, but of course, with that GASB, it actually made you put it on the balance sheet. Years and years ago, it was never on there. Can you imagine that? The liability of that size not on someone's statement. So anyway, they came up with that one. That was a while ago, and that was actually an excellent disclosure. All right, moving on to page 10. So the next few pages are the required communications and those charged with governance. And it talks about the plan, scope and timing, and our audit, it was conducted in accordance with our plan, scope. We didn't, we certainly complied with all ethic requirements regarding independence. And as I mentioned, in your significant accounting policies, there weren't any changes in your policies at all during the year. You didn't have any new ones, so they weren't changed. On page 11, this is where it talks about accounting estimates. Other than the pension liability, that's your biggest significant estimate and sensitive estimate. There weren't any other estimates noted. And then this item, I always want to point out, identified and suspected fraud, we did not identify any actual or suspected instances of fraud. Okay, moving on to page 12. There were no significant difficulties encountered during the audit, except, of course, this was our first year doing the audit after a long time, you know, with the other firms, so a lot of documentation we had to get. And during the year, you know, you guys had the absence of your treasurer for seven months, and then your accounting manager had a leave of absence for two months. And, you know, that resulted in a later start and a later delivery, which isn't a surprise. But I want to point out, even though the delivery was, the start was late and the delivery was late, you had no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies. So I wanted to point that out. There were no uncorrected adjustments noted, except for the pension, as we talked about, and there were no past adjustments. There were no significant unusual transactions, and on page 13, there were no disagreements with management. We received our representations requested from management. There were no consultations with other accountants on any issues, and there were no other significant matters to be reported to you. Moving on to page 14, within your internal control letter, there's an area called noncompliance with laws and regs, and in that letter, it indicates there were no instances of noncompliance noted. Moving on, other information in the documents, that is in our audit opinion. It talks about the RSI information and the supplementary information. And then the last item, there were no issues with respect to the entity being able to continue as a going concern. Okay, and that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Also, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank management and Ms. Larson and her team for all the effort required to get this audit done.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciated the summary way that you presented. And it's great to hear that even though we were without a treasurer for so long, we were still in a very good shape for you to figure out that we were complying all the way through. I'm gonna open it up for council questions at this point in time and be aware that I can't actually see Councilman Jenkins and Madam Mayor. Ah, Madam Mayor, I just see the PowerPoint, so why don't you go ahead and chime in?
Oh, thank you so much, Mayor Protem. I just want to say, Dan, thank you so much for such a thorough report, but I just have to sing praises to our finance team for their meticulous work, hard work, and it shows because you have actually validated their hard work through your audit reports. So thank you so much for that very clear, concise report, and it was easy to understand for us non-finance-type people, so I appreciate that. That's all I have.
You're welcome. Okay, Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. I would also echo the mayor's comment about the staff and how they perform. That's, I know, a lot of strain, a lot of work, so thank you for that. I do have two questions on page 11. It talks about on the quantitative aspects of the entity's significant accounting practices. It says, other than pension obligation, no significant accounting estimates were identified. What does that mean? I'm not sure I understand really what that means when you say other than pension obligations.
Yeah, so what that means, let me talk about the pension a little bit. So within the pension, there are assumptions. And those assumptions, they also have estimates as to what the estimated liability is. And so that is, because the number is material, that is considered a significant estimate. You don't have any other estimates. I mean, you have depreciation on, you know, your business-type activity capital assets and your government-wide, but I don't think that's significant. I mean, your estimated useful life, of course, that's an estimate, you allocate that amount over the estimated useful life, but to me, it's not significant. Depreciation isn't, you know, isn't that big of a deal. An example of something that would be an estimate, let's say you had accounts receivable, and you weren't sure about the collectibility of it, and we didn't get a confirmation for the full amount, and you weren't getting it, and you set up an allowance. You wanted to discount a certain amount of it because you weren't comfortable with getting it. That would be, if the number's material, that would be an estimate on management's part to say, hey, you know, we're reducing that accounts receivable number by the potential allowance for doubtful accounts that we don't think we're gonna get. And, you know, once again, you don't have anything that is significant in that particular area.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, you had a second question?
Yes, on page, well, I just, maybe it's a question for the assistant town manager. So this, as you mentioned earlier, this was the first time we've used this firm and very impressed with the presentation and the work. Was this within the budget as was allocated? Because they were new?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Well done.
Okay, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and thank you for the presentation. Going to page seven, and I hope I understood you correctly. You mentioned additions and use the word deletions. When would we delete anything from?
Additions or deletions. So deletions, if you were to look in your schedules in the back, for capital assets, it would be something you've sold, or if you had something in construction in progress, it really isn't a deletion, but it's called that in the category and it's transferred into your other capital asset items and then depreciated over the estimated useful life when it's placed in service.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is on page 12. I really appreciate you recognizing our treasurer for the efforts that she had to make to go back and make all of the corrections to the previous financial reports and getting them up to speed. So your audit is after her work of doing all of those corrections.
That's correct.
That's excellent. So thank you, Karina, for all of your efforts, because I remember you talking about it and what you were going through, and for you to get it to this point where all of our records are acceptable and we have no material defects is truly commendable, and thank you for that. And then I have one other question. Where you have, under corrected, uncorrected and corrected misstatements. Explain the adjusting journal entries and GSB journal entries.
That's a great question. So the adjusting entries that were made were the adjusting entries for the pension plan, right, on the government-wide statement to go from the general fund to governmental activities and government-wide. Okay, so those entries were made. And then the other entries were made, once again, to go from the general fund to government-wide. So it's really to convert everything to the long-term nature, because you're preparing two sets of books, if you will, under accrual and modified accrual. They make it so complicated.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, any questions? Okay, I have none. Thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you again to our finance team. Thank you so much. All right, next, we're gonna bring up Director Harrington for our official street map updating. If you could. I did want to say I really appreciated the color coding that you did. So let's, do you have anything to present other than what's been presented, or do you just want to field questions?
I do want to point out that we have noted a couple errors, so I am going to follow up with our Public Works and Operations team to double-check the road list. So Spruce Street, for example, is shown as a town-owned street, and it's not. So that's something we have to go through and just make sure all the roads are correctly allocated to who owns them.
Okay, that being said, Ms. Minor, may, if you may be assist, is this ready for consensus to go to legislation this evening, or do we want to wait until we have the updated?
We should probably wait and double-check the roads. Yeah.
That's, that's fair. Given that, why don't, if you guys are okay, Councilman Jenkins, I see your hand up. Could we hold our questions to the, to be presented with the updated list? Are you okay with that, Councilman Jenkins?
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, anybody have any issues with that? Okay, Madam Mayor?
Just one other, I know you're gonna look at them, but Fox Elder is one to look at as well. I know there's a controversy on that one. The rest of them, I just assumed that they were correct. So that one I have my eye on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harrington, for bringing that up and for you and the Public Works to work on that together. Appreciate it.
We'll bring it back.
Okay, we'll see you soon. Okay, that brings us to Director Stahl. Why don't you tell us about the fire alarm system service project briefly, okay?
Thank you. As you know, this building is now about 20 years old. And several years ago, we were having numerous issues with the fire alarm system in this building. And this building, the fire alarm system is a Siemens product, and Siemens is a very large company. They manufacture lots of different systems. We actually deal with them a lot over at the wastewater treatment plant as well. They have lots of types of systems, but this is a Siemens system over here. We did just, at the last time, replace the panel. We did not replace all of the sensors throughout the building, and there are numerous. What you have before you tonight is for the replacement of the sensors on the second and third floor. We're gonna do this in stages. The next time, we're gonna come forward with the replacement on the first floor, which would then update all of the sensors throughout the building. And there are, off the top of my head, I believe, 11 air handlers on the second and third floor. And there are at least five sensors on each one of those air handlers, so there are quite a few throughout the building. The proposal that you see in front of you tonight is for the replacement of those sensors and therefore upgrade those systems. We have been having problems a lot of times with the alarms going off. A lot of times, we come in in the building and the alarms are going off. So this is the opportunity to take care of those upgrades. It is a sole source to Siemens, because we really don't have a choice, because when you make the decision to go with a fire alarm system, it's proprietary. And so Siemens sensors have to match with the Siemens panel. And so it doesn't give us a lot of flexibility in that standpoint, so that's what you see before you tonight. But I do recommend that we move ahead with it and go ahead and handle the replacement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Director Stahl. Before I open it up to Councilman Madam Mayor, I did want to ask you, you said, we're gonna do this in phases. You said the next time you come around, will be replacement of the first floor. Is there a benefit to doing it in phases, or is there a benefit in doing it all at once, cost-wise, or does it matter?
We could potentially do it all at once. We just have so many projects going on, honestly, throughout the town, and Donnie and I are kind of stretched a little thin, and we're just trying to get these taken care of, because it appears to us that the ones that are giving us the most problems are the ones on the second and third floor. So we want to do that, and then next year, we'll come forward with another opportunity to to replace the first floor. It's not, there's nothing pressing about it. It's not as if we don't have
Sure.
You know, fire alarm system. We do have a fire alarm system. It's just painful for us, because the ones, especially the one on the third floor, has really been giving us the most problem. And there's, what would you say, Janine? When Aaron comes in in the morning and he's Yeah, so it's
That's a problem.
It's a problem. And so it's, it's, it's
Okay.
It's a necessary replacement.
All right, I'm gonna open it up to council and Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Stahl, for putting in the memorandum that it is a sole source through Siemens. I appreciated that, because that was gonna be my question when I was looking at the, that we only had the one quote. So thank you for, you know, making us aware of that.
Yeah, that's, it's so common in the building industry. When you go with any type of controls package, you get locked in. And so you get locked into those, and it's not uncommon in buildings. When I was at the university, we were locked into Johnson Controls. And so you always, and does it give them some pricing abilities? Yes, it does, but that's just one of the evils of building ownership.
And there is no discount for the number if we were to do through with my
No, they're giving us a fixed price per unit, per upgrade, and that's why we didn't go with the whole project at one time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. My question was very similar to that. Is there any fear that they would raise the price instead of locking it in today? Because I know everything changes on a whim, and if, even if you don't utilize it until another phase, is there a possibility of them raising the price on us when we're ready to go into the next phase?
I think the honest answer to that is yes, there's certainly that that concern, but I would also say that there, you know, like with a lot of electronics, they can also go down in value, because right now, a lot of the electronics products are especially escalated. And hopefully, you know, in waiting, I don't think we want to wait to do the second and third floor, but I do think there's the opportunity because of COVID. Electronics, we've actually, you know, as they finally started to catch up, we're starting to see that some of that is starting to come down a little bit in price, because at one time, electronics were just outrageous in price, and they're still probably, as what we're seeing on the rest of our construction jobs, and we have many. Electronics are still the longest lead time issues. Controls are a long lead time issue, which is still keeping the price fairly high. So I think the risk of an exorbitant price increase could also be weighed against the fact that we could see a price decrease a little bit over time, just because of availability in the future. So I, that's my thing.
Speculation, who knows, but could go up, could go down. Okay, Councilman Jenkins, you have any questions for Director Stahl?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the only other question I had, you indicated this is coming from the general fund balances within our budget.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
We will work with it under the facilities management budget. We have the building in here, and it will certainly come out of the town town hall budget, but it's certainly something that we'd be able to fund.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we're looking for a consensus because of the amount to move to legislation, and we have this listed as Resolution 2404. Councilman, are you in favor of moving this forward to legislation?
Yeah, I'm in favor of moving it forward.
Okay, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Okay, and I am a yes as well. Thank you, Director Stahl.
Thank you.
This time, Chief, if you could come on up and present to us an IT upgrade request.
Good evening, council. Well, Plaidah Police Department is in possession of their next generation of body cameras. As we went to implement them, we quickly learned that our network and IT infrastructure, which is aging, is unable to support the new body camera technologies, the wireless continuity and the storage. So we worked with the town vendor, IT vendor, and the vendor that works with us for the police department and developed the solution. We're recommending the purchase of items under the Montgomery College Infrastructure Products and Services Contract using ARPA money. I do know that on the quotes that you have, Robert Ansel, who works with our IT vendors, name is on there. I've got fresh quotes on that. We don't have them for the ones where they listed the previous chief, but we can get those. But the total amount of the ARPA purchase is $39,871.90, and we ran this through the grants and procurement coordinator for the town, and she ran it through Tom Himmler, who is our ARPA consultant.
Thank you, Chief. I'm gonna open it up for questions and discussion for council. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Chief, my only question is, you talked about the IT infrastructure not supporting the new cameras, the new technology. Does the $39,871.90 include the cost to bring the infrastructure in line to support the camera?
It does. This should get us up and running. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Chief, for bringing this forward. I just had, I guess, a curiosity.
I just had, I guess, a curiosity question. You mentioned in your memo that you have, your department has an IT consultant that's different from the town consultant. Is that because it's a specialized equipment that you had, that you have a separate IT vendor?
That's correct. He's part-time, and he's a vendor that we budgeted for the last several years. Specializes in things like body cameras, in-car cameras, LPRs and things such as that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Madam Mayor, any comments? Nope?
I have nothing, thank you.
Great. Chief, I appreciate you recognizing the issue and promptly addressing it. Obviously, it's a compliance issue, it's a safety issue. So at this point in time, we're looking at a consensus to move this forward based on the amount, even though it's ARPA funding. Councilman, would you like to move forward with the chief's proposal for the total cost of purchase of the IT infrastructure for $39,871.90?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Mayor?
I'm in favor.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, move forward, please, thank you.
Okay, and I am in favor as well. So we're gonna move this to legislation. And I have this as 2405. Thank you, Chief. Director Harrington, if I could have you return. I very much appreciate your memorandum, dated March 12, 2024, where you've listed your understanding. I know this was a team effort with the staff, but you've listed your understanding of what town council's priorities are in discussing with MDOT, our transportation items. Other than your memorandum, is there anything you'd like to point out before we get into discussion?
No.
Okay, thank you. I know, Councilman Jenkins, you have some questions?
Yes, I do. Again, thank you Director Harrington. So this is essentially the same list as the previous year?
No, it has been updated. We did remove several items because they're either already under, you know, production, the Charles Street upgrades and certain things like that. So we have updated the list, and we've also added a few things. Most notably, Glen Albin at Crane Highway, US 301 for a traffic signal. Old Stagecoach Road at Crane Highway for a traffic signal. Rosewick Road, we just want to make sure that it's on their radar, that at some point in the future, we will need a crossover at that traffic signal. And then just updating and kind of separating out Hawthorne Road, Maryland 225, to kind of call that to their attention as far as crosswalks, XLD cell lanes, and the timing and traffic pattern there. It's very, very dangerous sometimes.
Thank you. And I would compliment your and the staff's effort to ensure a crossing at Rosewick with the new entrance to Pine Grove and the access across the street to any other developed mall, all streets. So thank you for pointing that out. As I, I guess a secondary question, any update on the safety beacons on Charles Street and the proposed traffic signal at Willow Lane and Charles Street?
I have not received any updates on those.
And... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Director Stahl has an updated...
Signal. We did this week get Brent an MOU and the Right of Entry Agreement, which State Highway requested from us down there. Because apparently, they're indicating that they were ready for the approval. So the consultant prepared the MOU. I think it is in the attorney's office, our attorney's office at this point for review. And as soon as he completes that, Brent is going to sign that, which hopefully would facilitate the movement forward of the approval of the traffic signal. At our last meeting with D.R. Horton, they indicated that they were ready, they were planning to begin construction on the signal as soon as they had a permit. So I think things are moving. And Horton has indicated that they feel that that is one of their top priorities and that they're gonna construct it as soon as they get the permit. So the traffic consultant Lenhart was the one who prepared the MOU. And I think hopefully that will be signed here very soon, and we will be able to move forward.
Thank you Director Stahl for standing on top of that. Councilman Jenkins, any follow-up?
I get a lot of questions about that, so thank you for the update. And then any, I guess Director Harrington, is there any update with respect to the Charles Street street skate study? I know some of the budget was cut from that, but I haven't heard any update, or is there any update?
They're actually having an open house on June 17 here at the town. So that is the latest update. They have posted some new information on their website. So if you go to the town's planning department page and go to transportation updates, I have a link directly there, and you can see where they're at on that process.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I really appreciate you addressing the standing water on Crane Highway. Because it doesn't just become standing water, it becomes ice when it's super, super cold and it's a hot mess for traffic. So thank you for addressing that. Follow-up question about the light from Pine Grove. How is that going to impact the neighborhood that's right to the next of it?
Hickory Ridge Green or the Severn Drive?
On Charles Street.
Hickory Ridge?
Hickory Ridge. Those both had a major concern because they thought they should have gotten a light or something. So with that light is at Pine Grove, traffic is gonna stop. And then when he goes, they're never gonna get out of there. It's kind of like coming off of Kent Avenue, trying to get on Charles Street when the light is done. So what type of remediation do we have for them? Because it's gonna be a mess.
We did. And, you know, as with any traffic light, it creates its own destinies down the line on both sides. And so it's going to be, you know, state highway, it is a state highway that they're trying to enter onto. Personally, I would tell you that, you know, the thing that should have happened was that we should have had an interconnection to Agroopia. And it's very sad that that didn't happen when that was first being built. The road's still aligned right there. And to be honest, it could alleviate a lot of traffic having to pull out on, and, you know, if, to really make it a safe entrance, you would make it a right-in, right-out only just because of the sheer volume of traffic there. But you really couldn't do that without some secondary entrance, which would be difficult at this point. I think the residents of Hickory Ridge fought the interconnection initially. And now, the thing would be is that now Hickory Ridge would benefit from that. And they may be in favor of doing that today. But I'm not sure that the residents of Agroopia would be in favor of it. So that you may have, you know, the roles might have reversed in this scenario. But it is, it is a challenge all the way around. I still think at some point, you know, we could consider condemnation of those two parcels that are, there's two little triangle parcels that went to the HOA. And the challenge of getting them back, it requires a vote of all the residents. And so you'd have to have, I think, 85% of the residents of Agroopia agree to transfer that property to the town. It probably would be easier to, you know, do a condemnation if we decided that that was important. But they're two small parcels, it's just two little triangles. But it's a challenge, and we'd have to work through, you know, trying to do some safety measures to improve that.
I appreciate it. I just, I know the experience of trying to get onto Charles Street every day after work. It's horrible. And I can't imagine being that close to two lights being caught between two lights.
It might give them, you know, we really have to play it out as it goes. It may give them a break. Because, you know, when that light is red, it'll stop all of the eastbound traffic at one point. So it may make it so that if the timing of the lights between the one at 488 and the one down there were timed, you know, it could give a break for them to get out. So we could try that.
Thank you, I appreciate the explanation.
Okay, Councilman Jenkins, you have a follow-up for Director Harrington?
Yeah, thank you Director Stahl and Director Harrington for the, and Councilwoman Bryant Ward for the issue about Hickory Ridge, that's a critical issue. Just an observation, because it's a state highway, I suspect that the state would have some kind of a spacing problem by having so signals so close to each other. But I do think there would be a gap with a signal at Willow Lane. At one time, there was a possibility of having that interconnection between Agroopia and Hickory Ridge. And one way to slow down that traffic, if there ever were to be, would be to have a, basically a traffic circle or small rotary that you could, and slow that traffic down. So they can make them, if that were ever to happen. And I know at one time, many years ago, that was a possibility. And that would help the both communities in the near and distant future. Thank you. And also just, I appreciate again the work on particularly the item about the King's Grant processing that's opposite the pathway to Tillman Lake. That's also an important issue. Thank you.
Councilman Jenkins, I let you go two times, and you stole the one comment that I had, right? That's okay, thank you. So yes, I will echo Councilman Jenkins' comments about the summary. And of course, Director Harrington, the King's Grant entrance, taking another look at the safety issues there, as well as safety issues along the biking path along 488. Looking to add that. So at this point in time, we're looking at a consensus from council as to move forward with the summary of the memorandum that Director Harrington has provided us as the true and accurate transportation priority list to move forward with for the following year in communications with our own Department of Transportation. Councilman? Okay, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, and well done, thank you.
Thank you. I am in agreement as well. Thank you so much, Director Harrington. Okay, at this point in time, we have listed on the agenda a council agenda item request, updates from Mr. Manuel. This time, we're gonna, we're gonna push that as a future agenda item because Mr. Manuel is absent this evening. As it relates to our next agenda item, Ms. Minor, we are on legislation.
So the first piece of legislation, ordinance 24-3, we are gonna bring back, corrected at a future meeting for a first reading and introduction, so that you'll be seeing that again soon. The next legislative item, Resolution 24-04, Siemens Fire Alarm System Service Project. Resolution 24-04, Siemens Fire Alarm System Service Project for introduction and consideration of adoption. A resolution concerning Siemens Fire Alarm System Service Project for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a professional service contract for the upgraded replacement of equipment and components of the Siemens Fire Alarm System in Town Hall and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you, Ms. Minor. Having reviewed the resolution of 2404, the Siemens Fire Alarm System Service Project, is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Yes. Yes, absolutely.
What you have said, so he's asking that the resolution states for replacement of equipment and components of the Siemens Fire Alarm System in Town Hall, but we're actually only doing the second and third floor. Is that relevant, or?
I don't, I don't think it's relevant. We'll word the second, the next phase. We can word it as the first floor or word it as the same.
Okay, just wondered about, in the future, if we come back and say we're going to the first floor, and we've already said we're doing it in Town Hall, is it appropriate?
And I, one thing about this resolution, since it's sole source, we do need a two-thirds approval.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, I hear your concern, hearing Ms. Minor's feedback on that. Do you have any further questions? Okay. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we adopt Resolution 24-04, Siemens Fire Alarm System Service Project as presented.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor of passing Resolution 2404, the Siemens Fire Alarm Service Project as presented? Please state aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed? Hearing none? Moving on, Ms. Minor?
Resolution 24-05, La Plata Police Department Information Technology Purchase for introduction and consideration of adoption. Resolution concerning La Plata Police Department Information Technology Purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement for the replacement of infrastructure and software associated with body worn cameras for the La Plata Police Department.
Thank you, Ms. Minor. Having reviewed Resolution 2405, La Plata Police Department Information Technology Purchase, do I have a motion to adopt? Yes. Yes.
Ms. Minor, look down at the last paragraph. What is the 1,500? Last paragraph on the resolution. Hold it, standard 2 of 9,500 dollars.
So Chief, can you shed light, if you may, just come on up? Is this itemized in the resolution?
Yes.
Between 9,500, 14,16487, and then 16,207?
Okay.
B&amp;H photo?
Thank you.
Very good question on that. Hearing the explanation by the chief?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I move that we adopt Resolution 24-05, La Plata Police Department Information Technology Purchase.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Winkler, second? Thank you, Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor of the adoption of Resolution 2405, La Plata Police Department Information Technology Purchase as presented? Please state aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye as well. All those opposed? Okay, hearing none? Okay, this brings us to new business and commission reports. Councilman Winkler?
Next week, the Design Review Board meets tomorrow, and Historic Preservation Committee meets Friday. So we'll have some updates next week.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. I do not have a report for beautification at this time. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and thank you for a good job tonight. The Planning Commission met on March 5, and we went over the new boundaries for the different wards and the streets, the updates for the streets and everything, and we passed it to come to you. So it looked really good. I really liked the boundaries, the maps, and how they were expanded and the explanation for how we define what is urban versus rural. We had some rural roads, and I was really surprised at the rural roads on being parts of Glen Albin and parts of Washington Avenue. I didn't understand it, and Director Harrington did a great job of explaining that to us.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. The Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, which is scheduled for tomorrow morning, has been postponed or canceled, so we'll meet again in April. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Mayor?
I just have two items. One, just a reminder that the viewing and funeral for former Councilman Simpson is this week. One, just a reminder that the viewing and funeral for former Councilman Simpson is this week. So we can say our final goodbyes. And I know that our town, Assistant Town Manager has sent a spray of flowers from the town for the ceremony or the funeral, I should say. And then the other thing is April 1st is ice cream with the Easter Bunny. So that's an exciting time and it's right around the corner. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Appreciate your upcoming events. At this time, I would like to hear any motions to adjourn.
We'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, excellent. Hearing first and a second, we will adjourn at 6:50 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.
Great job. Thanks, Councilman Challenger.